...jump through the hoops or just a few or whatever. All right.
Do you want to stand up? Do you want you to stand up, please? Okay, raise your right hand. You do solemnly swear and affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the constatation of the State of Alaska and the ordinances of the Petersburg Borough and that you will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties of an elected official for the Petersburg Borough to the best of your ability.
Yes.
Okay, you'll find this is a, you'll see your name on here. Please sign your name.
Can I say for holding? You gonna sign?
No, I'm not. I'm not important enough to sign.
Oh, Philip, all right. Oh, that's one I had last time. Totally. You have your agenda to follow. Your first meeting, you have no recording. And your agenda is numbered inappropriately.
It is?
Oh, it isn't. You guys will figure it out.
You fooled us.
And thank you all. Oh, yeah. Let me see it.
Oh, thirteen, fifteen.
Yeah.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen, four, thirteen.
Oh, two thirteen, so why don't we move on all this?
Okay, well.
Oh, a twelve and a thirteen, two twelves and two thirteens.
We'll fix that so I don't get confused like I did last time and leave something out.
Oh, but nobody was gonna correct you till afterwards. Gonna just knock it off.
Okay. Call to order the Borough Meeting. It's the first Borough Meeting of the Unified Borough of Petersburg. So now it's time for the voluntary pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda this evening is term designations for the Assembly members. And they're gonna be done, drawn by lot. The initial terms of the four elected Assembly members will be determined this evening. For the Petersburg Borough Charter, as it is noted in numerous areas in the Charter, the first regular election for the Petersburg Borough will not occur until October 7th of 2014. The terms to be determined this evening will be two terms ending October 2016, which is a forty-five month term, and two terms that are thirty-three months, which end October of 2015. And the other two vacancies, when we appoint those, they'll be for twenty-one months. So the terms don't start counting down until October of 2013. Okay, and Kathy has a plan here. She has four pieces of paper and they have, two of them have terms ending on the six, 2016, and two are 2015.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm a little concerned about proceeding this way. As I read the Borough Charter, it talks about electing, you know, anticipated six people and I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with just saying the two that we appoint later get the shortest terms as opposed to everybody takes equal chances.
Kathy, have you talked to anybody about this procedure?
No, I was just going on the common sense thing, but you guys are the ones that ran and I don't think you can have a problem there, John.
Well, I just-
You guys are actually the only official seated Borough members. I can't understand why we bring in your appointees to go for four years.
Well, the-
We should appoint to the shortest term.
Well, my problem is just reading. I mean, obviously, this was not drafted with the idea that we'd have two vacancies.
That's true.
But it seemed to anticipate that everybody at once would go by lot.
You have to go by lot.
I know that, but what I'm trying to say is it would make more sense to me to have the two vacancies filled and then-
Then we're gonna go for a good six weeks because I'm looking at it as you can't appoint until your ordinance is in effect.
Nancy, you have a comment?
When we were functioning as a city and we appointed someone to fill a vacancy, say the person who quit had three or two and a half years left to serve, the appointment went until the next election and then they were-
Correct. And then people had to put their names into the ballot.
So that sounds to me like a good reason to save those short, I mean, I would volunteer happily for the one-year term. But I think-
I don't know.
Just the way we've done it in the past.
I don't see where this would get us in any legal trouble, but I'm not an attorney, so.
I can get you other attorneys if you want other opinions.
So what would your suggestion be? Just leave it, no term limits or no designated term length until everybody's seated? What if that takes, we have, we're supposed to do it within forty-five days, but-
Well, the other thing to do is you simply do the two vacant terms by lot also right
First item on the agenda we have to-
It's not a good idea. We're reinventing the wheel.
Yeah.
Actually, no, if it helps, Jim run and look at our first meeting's agenda and he gave it the okay, if that makes a difference to you. But I do not ask for an opinion on how he figured this should go.
I would be willing to proceed with this matter, but if we have to take a vote on this in the Assembly, I'd, we have to have a motion.
John, what page is that on?
Well, it's on this, my copy, it's, it's a charter, it's Article II, Section C.
So we need to keep rolling. We have a busy agenda this evening, folks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
My move that we proceed is planned by just drawing lots with the numbers here.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to proceed with the way that is before us on the agenda this evening. Any more discussion?
Perhaps we should put all the terms in there and draw them and then whoever gets the point, well, no, I think that we should proceed like, like as planned.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, a clerk will call the roll. All those in favor of proceeding with the way it is on the agenda this evening?
Mark?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
John Haverlick?
Yes.
John Hoag?
No.
Sue Flint?
Yes.
Okay, so it passes four to one. So we will draw from the four pieces of paper.
Oh, I think we should have done it by age.
There's no little X's on it.
I can read you.
Okay, what do we have?
Well, I just want each one, all of them, and read them out loud as to what it says their term is. Sue?
2016.
Nancy?
2015.
John Hoag?
2016.
John-
2010.
Okay, so Sue Flint, John Hoag, or is it John Haverlick will be till 2016?
15.
You're saying Nancy, okay.
I agree, I agree.
All right, now the next item is election of a vice mayor. Borough Charter, Section 2.05V requires the vice mayor to be elected by the Assembly membership. The vice mayor shall act as mayor during the absence or disability of the mayor and if vacancy, a vacancy occurs, the vice mayor shall become mayor until the next regular election, at which, at which time, a mayor shall be elected to fill the remainder of the unexpired term. So we need a nomination for somebody to become vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I nominate Sue Flint.
Do you accept nominations here?
Sure.
Any other nominations? Well, it looks like without, with approval of the Assembly, we'll appoint Sue Flint as the vice mayor for the Borough Assembly. Congratulations, Sue.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one question. How long is your term for?
I get the full deal.
Three years.
2016.
By Charter.
Yeah, by Charter, that's the way it is.
It's a three-year term.
Anyway, approval of minutes, the approval of the final minutes of the Petersburg City Council will be considered by the Assembly this evening. There's two meetings of December 3rd, 2012, and December 19th of 2012.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the meeting of the last two city councils. Approve the minutes of the last two city council meetings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, amendment and approval of this evening's meeting agenda. And also under that topic, unless there is a desire of the Assembly to reorder the format of the meeting agenda, the existing format will be used and a Borough Ordinance prepared reflecting the traditional business order. Any amendments to this evening's agenda? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda. I mean, so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this evening's meeting agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Public hearings and bid awards. I don't see any. Okay, this time I won't walk, skip over these two. Visitors' views related to the agenda. Okay, seeing none. Visitors' views unrelated to the agenda. Okay.
I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the City of Petersburg Police Department, PIA, Hammer, Wecon, and all the others that participated in the successful tsunami drill, even though the tsunami was a six-inch wave out at wherever, Port Arthur, wherever it landed. I just thought our community just did a great job. It was just reassuring to hear the police car going along with the siren and the megaphone and the siren go off and to see all the people just orderly and peacefully going about the business of getting safe. So just comment commending our community and our police department and all that were involved. Thank you. I didn't see who it was. Rob Thomas in Supertown School, sorry, for the record.
Okay, visitors' views unrelated to the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is Board, Commission, and Committee Reports. And per Borough Charter 19.08C, all appointed and elected advisory boards, committees, and commissions in effect at Borough incorporation, excepting the school and hospital boards and planning commission, shall be dissolved one year after the effective date of incorporation unless specifically continued by ordinance. Until ordinance or ordinances are provided or boards, commissions, and committees formally disbanded, the existing boards and committees of the former city of Petersburg may continue to meet per city code and report under this agenda item. Well, that brings us to the consent agenda. On this evening's consent agenda, there's three items. The local approval for 2013 gaming permit for Petersburg Little League, the local approval for 2013 gaming permit for the Emblem Club, and the last one is the local approval for Elks Lodge Number 1615 Liquor License Renewal.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Okay, report of other offerers. Stephanie Funt is back to give us her school report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, my name is Stephanie. I'm the school board rep for Petersburg High School. I have a few things to highlight that have been going on in the school. We sent five wrestlers to state. John Burks, Caleb Simahan, Chris Thorsonson, Brett Martenson, and DJ Tormora. Chris Thorsonson took six. He was our highest placing individual at the state tournament. We were lucky to send most of our team up there. It was in November, I believe. All-State Music Festival was a blast. Four kids went, Bud Bergen, Fran Abbott, Morris Holvin, and myself. We auditioned in and got to sing with music students from all over Alaska, directed by college and university. I don't wanna say bigwigs. It was a very useful experience, quite an honor as well. Also coming up, as far as the music program, Bud Bergen, Fran Abbott, and I are heading to Portland for an All-Northwest Choir, which we also auditioned onto. And same sort of deal, we rehearse with very distinguished conductors, directors for a few days and then give a nice concert. And so we're looking forward to that. We did some whole decorating. And the junior class cut out snowflakes and the senior class put up a train, like a Polar Express train. And the junior class won. Everyone participated and there was lots of holiday spirit going on in the school the week before break, so that was a good thing. The talent show was a success. There was, I believe, sixteen acts. Students did a great job of performing and it was well-attended by the community. Basketball started in December officially. And the Little Norway Tournament hosted by the Dahl family was a success. Students performed well. The boys and girls both took second place in the tournament. There was quite a few teams there and finishing behind Kulak. They learned a lot and it was, it was a good tournament for the Petersburg Vikings. I believe during Christmas break, I know that the girls left midnight Christmas night and they were gone for two weeks. They did two, and two different tournaments. They went to Ketchikan and performed well there and then they, and the boys went to Wrangle. Or actually, both teams went to Ketchikan and then they both went to Wrangle, I believe. And Wrangle Homecoming, it was a good tournament, I believe, except the boys won two and the girls lost two. And then as far as basketball next week, they're going, oh, we're hosting this weekend. If you would like to come watch, the varsity boys are hosting Edgecombe and their games are at six and the varsity boys are, games are at 7:45, both Friday and Saturday. Girls, the junior varsity girls are hosting Thunder Mountain. You can watch their games at 4:30 on Friday and Saturday up at the gym. Lastly, the Tsunami Bowl, or our National Ocean Science Bowl team went to Ketchikan High School during December. And it was just kind of a practice thing. They're specializing in physical science and marine biology and such. And sadly, they took third place, but it was a very wonderful learning experience. They're preparing to go to Seward February 8th and 9th for their real competition. They will give, I believe, a twenty-page research paper on a select topic and will also compete like with buzzers, try to answer questions. So best of luck to them. And that is all that I have prepared tonight to tell you about that's going on in high school. Thank you very much. Is there any questions? Yes.
But two things. One, I'd like to congratulate you. While you're here, I did it in your absence about what a fantastic job you did on the talent show.
Oh, thank you.
That was just amazing. I know it was a lot of work and it-
It was a good experience.
It was just very impressive how you put that all together and seeing the kids' talent, including yours, was just, was, as students would say, awesome.
Thank you.
Or that's probably meant to, and another thing I really appreciate is talking, we usually just hear about the athletics and it's-
Oh, yes.
It's really nice to hear about the Tsunami Bowl and some of the academic achievements because I feel that should be right up there, too.
Yeah, if there's anything that I'm missing or you wanna hear about, just let me know and I will check into it and report to you.
Yeah, just any advanced classes or things that you think are really exciting academically?
I will give that some thought.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Stephanie?
Now, but congratulations for your performances.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, now it's the mayor's report. And we're advertising, we're seeking letters of interest. The Borough is seeking letters of interest from qualified Borough residents to fill the following vacancies until the first regular Borough election in October of 2014. The Assembly members, we need two. Hospital board members, three. Planning commissioners, seven. Anyone appointed to a vacancy will be required to file a public official's financial disclosure statement within thirty days of taking office. So those are the positions we need to fill, so there's quite a few. So don't be afraid to step up. Appointment to the Southeast Alaska Power Agency. Excuse me. Petersburg has traditionally been appointing its power and light superintendent as the voting member to SEPA. Petersburg's longtime alternate has been past Mayor Ted Smith, who has declined to continue to serve as the alternate as he has other interests to pursue. The city received one response to its call for letters of interest for the alternate position. That letter was from John Jensen and he's a prior member of SEPA board and current Thomas Bay Power Authority Board Member. So without any objection by the council, I would like to appoint Joe Nelson to the voting member and John Jensen to the alternate for that position. Looks like there's no objections, so that is what we'll do. Parliamentarian appointment. I know in the Borough Charter, Section 2.15, reads, "The Assembly shall appoint one of its members as parliamentarian who shall rule on procedural questions according to Robert's Rules of Order, the most current edition." I had a conversation with Steve and Kathy about this. That was also a city code and we never really had appointed a parliamentarian. At one point, there was, I think, one for a brief period of time. But I was thinking if the person that's chairing the meeting was the parliamentarian, if there's any questions, they could be brought up to the city clerk and she could dig it up and see what the correct procedure was to follow. Is there any objections to that? Or does anybody wanna be the parliamentarian?
I just think you pointed out a procedure where you become the de facto parliamentarian.
Okay, well, that's what we'll do then.
And so I would so move that the mayor is the parliamentarian.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the mayor will be the parliamentarian presiding at the meetings. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's how we'll do it. Alaska Municipal League Winter Legislative Meeting. The event will be held February 11th through the 14th at the Westmark Baronoff Hotel in Juneau. Had a little conversation with our lobbyist, Ray Mattioschowski, talked to the city manager about it. We've done this in the past. There's a ferry that actually leaves on the 10th, I believe, and it gets there, which is a Sunday. It gets there like eight o'clock or so in the morning on the 11th. And that day, there's just Alaska Municipal League functions going on. The following day is the mayor's conference, but Ray was thinking Monday, the 11th, would be a good day because he'd beat the rush, he could probably get appointments to get in and meet with whoever he wanted to, so. And just wanted to know who was interested in attending. I will be going. Are you going, Steve?
Yes.
Any others? Sue? John?
No.
Okay, so if we just give the names to the city clerk, we can tell her right now and she can make arrangements. Would you do that, Kathy?
I can do that.
Okay, it looks like John Haverlick, myself. John, are you interested or?
Well, is it needed? Is it necessary? Are two of you gonna be there as it is?
Unless you're interested in what takes place, it's, I don't think, you have to have a bunch of people there, no.
Yeah, I think, I mean, to me, the number one reason to go there would be to start lobbying for the police building.
Yep, exactly. Our capital projects list and, yeah.
And you two can probably do an adequate job of that with Steve. I don't see the need for others to be attendants unless, if you thought there was value, I'd go, but I don't.
Ray believes that smaller numbers are more effective, so.
Leave it to you as well.
You focus. Thanks, we'll do it like that then. Next item, Robert Venables, Energy Coordinator for the Southeast Conference. Mr. Venables is interested in conducting a stakeholder's roundtable table to discuss the hydro resources in and around not only Thomas Bay but southeast area that would benefit all southeast Alaska. We had some discussions about this back in November at Alaska, last Alaska Municipal League meeting in Anchorage and this has kind of materialized from that. And he's willing to facilitate it. He's been calling people from different communities in southeast, from Juneau to Ketchikan. Appears to be a lot of interest. People would like to have it here. And the tentative date is for February 6th. I haven't heard back from him today. It was yesterday, it was the last communication, but that's what it's looking like, so. I think it'd be a beneficial conversation.
That would be in Petersburg?
That's tentative plan, yeah. There'll be a roundtable with two, three people from each city and it'll be open to the public. Okay, Borough offices closed. The Borough offices will be closed on Monday, January 21st in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. Another item on the mayor's report that isn't printed on the agenda. It sounds like Heidi and Jim Agner have put in their official retirement, which will be effective in May. The city manager would like to use a firm that he's familiar with, Birmeyer and Firstman. They're from Minnesota. I read through the packet. It's not free, of course, but for this position, I thought it would be of value to do it and if there's no objection from the council, the manager could go into negotiations. I think you have to give them like seventy-five hundred dollars to start with, Steve, and then total cost will be around thirty thousand. They do the whole interviews. You'd like to, you wanna explain it a little farther since it's your time anyway, the manager's report?
What they do is they'll come to Petersburg, first of all, and they'll do some basically interviews with the Assembly, department heads, and Jim in particular. Develop what's called a position profile. It's basically what are we looking for and what do we need? And beyond just a job description, it's the, you know, what are we looking for on a lot of the characteristics to, which replacing Jim's gonna be tough. You know, and we've got some challenges with a lot of young officers, so. They will build that. They will go out there and they'll do, not just posting on job boards, but they'll actually go out and try to track down people that might have an interest. They'll do direct mailing as well as phone calls to other cities of similar sizes or try to identify people that may work in a larger police department that if, would like to work in a smaller city or have. They will do all of the screening interviews. They will do all the background checks. Narrow it down to some number of candidates that, you know, probably in the neighborhood of like five to seven. We will then narrow that down to those people that we would like to actually bring to Petersburg and then do formal interviews. They will, the consultants will come here, they will help with the interview process and help with, as much as we care to allow them, help with the decision-making process by pointing out anything that they may have seen or feel in the process. They also come back and do, in a six to twelve-month period, they will actually come back and help us with a performance appraisal of the new chief. And, you know, hate to call it, you know, stand behind the decision, but if at the end of that period of time, we decide that we've, I've made a bad decision, they will help us with the process of the person moves on and they basically guarantee their work, which means they'll go through the entire thing all over again at no charge other than just the travel expenses. So I think in the case of replacing our police chief, I think this is pretty important. Jim's well-respected here and we, we have some unique challenges. We really need to find the right person for this and I've worked with these folks before. They know what they're doing. And the whole process of going through it is stuff that we just, it's hard for us to have the kind of time and the background stuff to do good checks on police chiefs and the information, so. I think I covered it all.
Any questions of the manager on this one topic before he continues on his report?
Okay, the only question I have is, is there been any consideration to having a request for proposals, looking at other firms to do this type of work? Because I know that there are other entities out there that specialize in law enforcement placement.
There are. You know, we could do the RFP process. I'm a little concerned about time. Jim and Heidi's last day is the end of May and while- Jim and Heidi's last day is the end of May, and while that sounds like a long time, it's not when we get into this. You know, I informally checked with three other firms. They're all about the same price. Now, be clear, these folks do not specialize in just law enforcement. His background is former city manager, been an executive recruiter for six to eight years, I guess. They've recruited police chiefs before. As Mark said, they're based in Minnesota, so they kind of specialize in, you know, towns under 50,000 to, you know, not even smaller than us, in parts of, part of the country that's equally hard to recruit to. Nebraska, Kansas, Minnesota, the Dakotas, they, you know, areas that have interesting weather and different types of thing. The partner in the firm is actually his wife. Her name's Irina, and she's a specialist in the whole profile process of kind of psychology of it. Basically, running candidates through a process of not only the face-to-face interview, but some testing to, you know, make sure they're getting real accurate information on how people respond to different types of situations. Chose them because I know them and I've worked with them before and really comfortable with them. But, I mean, if the Assembly wants to do an RFP, we can. It will just, it'll add a couple of months to this process, unfortunately.
Why would it add a couple of months?
Well, if you're doing RFP, we've got to get it advertised and then give them, give people, you know, give or take 30 days to respond. So, that's, if we go with, we're, you haven't seen the schedule. They're talking about having a schedule to be here in about, oh, four weeks to start the interview process. If in fact, we go that route, you know.
I don't know if this would be for Steve or Jim, Chief. Just because I'm really cheap, $30,000 is on like a lot, and I know it isn't for something like this, but, you know, because we've done city manager searches and things and costs quite a bit, but I've really had a lot of faith in Chief Agner. He's really gotten this place in good shape, and I was, it's one of those things that maybe because of the time constraint, I'd really like to see the chief involved in, very involved in pick and replacement, because I think he knows what we need, and I'd really hope that we could do it on our own, but I understand the time constraints because Petersburg's a hell of a nice place to be, and I think, you know, we have a lot to offer. And with the chief's input, he knows what we need, because he's gotten the place in really good shape. You don't feel we can do it on our own?
No, I don't. I agree with everything you said, other than that part. The, doing it, I mean, there are certain positions that I'm comfortable doing it on our own. This is not one of them. The skill set that we need for a chief of police, and I'll try to hit, sent an email to some folks today. You know, we need somebody that is socially adept. I mean, that is part of the community, not just a police chief. It's just a small town, we're fairly remote. You know, we need a police chief that can interact with the community, can work with school, can work with hospital, can, you know, be out in public, not just doing law enforcement, but in a sense, be a face for the community in a lot of different ways. We also have some specific concerns, meaning the chief's got a fairly young, we don't have a lot of experience with Jim and Heidi leaving, so we've got to find somebody that has got enough experience that can train. We have some drug issues here, and I would like to find somebody that's got some experience in drug investigations. Again, you know, I'm making it harder by every one of these characteristics I put on the table. You know, and then we have the unique characteristics of, you know, Alaska weather and getting somebody here. So, I, we could do an advertisement, and we would get lots of people responding to it, because you're exactly right, this is a wonderful place to live, and we would spend a tremendous amount of time trying to go through them, trying to figure out who of them are serious and who of them are not. And I'm just concerned with the time restraints. We can't go for, we can't go too long without a, somebody in Jim's seat, and I'm fairly concerned about it. And you're right about one thing, Jim is heavily involved in, would be heavily involved in the process. This firm in particular, and they're not the only ones who do that, but that's part of the process why they come here at first, is to, they'll spend a lot of time with Jim, interview him, spend time with him, talk to him about what he thinks, spend a lot of time with me and any of you that want to be part of that interview process, to make sure we're getting folks who are, that we actually bring up here, that have gone through a whole series of steps that we're not bringing up, somebody here who's not going to work out for us. Doesn't make it perfect, but I don't, I don't think I can do it fast enough.
My turn?
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Jim Agner.
We're talking about you.
I'm the chief of police. One of the things I would like to agree with the Borough Manager on, in, I think everybody understands that I've been a huge supporter of our police department, but I have had the opportunity to work very closely with every single police department in Southeast Alaska over the years, and many of the other, many of the other departments statewide. And when I tell people and when I say that we have the very best police department in the state of Alaska, I truly mean it. And one of my concerns is, and one of the reasons why I gave as much lead time as I did in this, in my, in my, in my, this idea of retiring, is that I am concerned for the city of Petersburg, because many people do not realize what we really have here and how easy it is to slip away. And if we lose the ground from, I said, we truly have the best police department in the state of Alaska. I believe that. It's very easy to lose it, and then building that back up becomes very difficult. And so, you know, part of my concern is, I really, I care about this community, and I want to make certain that whoever we end up with is what the community needs.
Chief, you know, it's been really great that you have, you know, of all the things you've done here, and you're working with all the departments in the state, and, you know, this may be just sort of a dub, but do you know of anyone in any of those departments that we could...
I have, I have tried to steal a couple.
Okay, that's easy. Did you just circumvent the whole process?
Yeah, I have, I've made some efforts. I don't know that I've been successful, but again, yes, I've been in for, for probably the last six months, been trying to find somebody that would fit, so. But even, that said, I really do agree with, with the Borough Manager on this, because I would hate to think that we would, you know, lose ground, because it's so hard to build back up.
One of the, I mean, and, this is just anecdotal, I guess, there are firms that specialize in just doing law enforcement, and I thought about that for a while. I would prefer not going that direction. The main reason is so many of those firms, the people running them are former law enforcement people. Now, that's a good thing and a bad thing. I think for big cities, I think that's a right-on-target. I, particularly somebody that has to follow Jim Agner here, I need somebody that's maybe more than just a normal police chief. You know, Jim and Heidi are part of this community in ways that you don't always see in a police chief. We need something besides, we need law enforcement, we also need the social side, the ability to embrace the community. And I'm just a little concerned that if I go with a law enforcement-only type focus, that that's what we'll get. We'll get a law enforcement guy that is not prepared to become part of this community. Again, I mean, that's purely me thinking about it. It doesn't mean I'm right, but that's, that's why the direction.
Any other comments of the topic?
Mr. Mayor, the, you know, we've hired Steve to run the government. He's done a good job of it, so I'm inclined to defer to him. I am uncomfortable as a matter of principle of letting out an RFP for, they can go to $30,000 without a competitive process. That just bothers me. And I recognize that time is of the essence on this, because, you know, there's got to be a hiring of, to replace Sergeant Agner as well, which is, you know, I mean, we're talking about two very important positions. I guess, putting that, I guess I'll defer to the city manager on this. I would prefer in the future, though, to see an RFP process with consideration of various firms as opposed to one firm just being picked.
Just, it looks like the consensus of the Assembly is to have the city manager go ahead with this firm to start looking for a new police chief, and just for a point of clarification, the manager could have just hired him. You know, it's within his spending level to do that, and I thought it was, you know, he brought it up to me, and I thought it was a good thing to have a discussion on, so.
Can I add two things I'd like to say? One is that perhaps the city should consider hiring another officer as soon as possible, not wait for the final date of Sergeant Agner, because, you know, you may have to send somebody to the academy, we may have more delays. And secondly, I would suggest that we've adopted a philosophy of looking at wages of Southeast communities for setting, you know, wages for labor. I would suggest a review of the appropriate salary for the chief would be in order.
I hear a later question.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we're going to have a challenge. I mean, even starting like this, I'm not sure we can find somebody before Jim has to leave. I mean, so it's going to be kind of a full-court press. So, if it helps, if we end up finding someone in this process, I know the firm well enough that, you know, pieces they haven't done yet, we don't have to pay for. So, you know, they, they build a position profile, Jim comes up with the perfect candidate, I talk to him, and we find out, wow, we really think this is the right person, we can stop this process, and we don't have to pay them the rest. I don't expect that to happen, but they're pretty flexible folks.
Okay.
And the price tag I tried to give you is the high end. We've got some airline miles, we might be able to fly them up here and use that, so it's less expensive, so we'll try to do it from that perspective as well.
Okay, thanks. So, I guess that you have permission to proceed.
I will take care of it.
Yes.
Okay. Bid preparation is underway for hiring an independent consultant for a hydro inspection in Joe's area. It's required every five years. This effort will continue through the summer with the final report submitted late in the year. Power and Light's also working with SEPA to replace the station service transformers in the Petersburg substation. Power and Light will purchase and install the transformer and will be reimbursed by SEPA. Police Department is back at almost full strength. We are down one officer who will start at the academy February?
That's correct. He actually started this today.
Onboard today, and will hit the academy in February. This is not counting Jim and Heidi. Dare is starting in the school on the 11th. We had over 55,000 in drug seized in December and postal shipping interdictions that were bound for Petersburg. This is a, this goes back to, you know, our chief, but with a lot of cooperation prompted by him with the United States Postal Inspection Service, we've got some things going on that allowed us to do some inspections and stopped this stuff from getting here to Petersburg. This is a program that we hope to continue based on their availability and the availability of our officers. Paperwork for the mitigation component for the drive-down dock project should be, is done. Is that correct, Glow? Yes, I think I said that right. I wrote something different, but I knew it had changed. We have the permit. This will allow us to move forward on the final design, and we expect this project to be bid out in late 2013. Glow's been working with Tamaco, using P&amp;D designed ladder spec. We had some ladders on the crane dock. One dramatically failed, and in an inspection, we found several others that are in bad shape. So, we're trying to get some specs on what it would cost to replace those ladders, and, you know, can we get them done in this year's budget or soon enough? We're not sure about that yet, but we're at least in the process of making sure we've got a good design. Sandy has submitted the certificate to Medicaid to renew our ambulance service certification, something, again, we have to do on a regular basis to keep our ambulance service up and running. She's also started the training courses this week for the EMT Bridge Course and completed the first aid class for the police department employees. She'll be basically doing EMT-type training between now and I think the end of February, give or take, in the evening, so she's got her plate full. Finance is working on creating the new Borough Business ID and Sales Tax Exemption Cards, resale cards, Business ID Cards, Nonprofit Tax Exempt Cards, and Senior Citizen Tax Exempt Cards. Senior citizens will need to come in to Finance Office to have a new exemption card issued, including an updated picture taken by March 31st. We've got some notices on the radio, and it'll go in the newspaper as well, to try to get the word out.
So, are they ready tomorrow to do that?
We have, we can do some of them. You know, if we get 400 people show up tomorrow, we would have to make appointments, but for the moment, we can handle them as people walk in. We're updating all of our forms and software to remove the old city seal and name, and that will take some time, but we're starting on that process. Public Works is coordinating with Community Development and Arnold Ninge on a plan for removal of the collapsed warehouse adjacent to Birch Street. Fortunately, there was no damage to city infrastructure, result of the collapse. It's still in the slough, but we're working on a plan to get it out of there. Did I get that right, Chris?
Yep.
Okay. Water Treatment Plant upgrades. The contractor, ASRC McGrath, is finally moving forward, and we're starting to see some progress on that capital project that was out there. Pump Station 5 Design is in the final stages. Pumps for the project have been ordered, and the 95% plans are currently being reviewed by staff, so we'll start to have a better idea on the costs there. Neural Banding Radio Conversion is essentially done, thank to, thanks to Jerry White Thorne, Joe, Jim, Sandy, Carl's folks, Glow, hell, everybody. You know, we've got a couple of minor issues, but it's, for the most part, done in, you know, record time. This was a requirement that we had to do to make some federal agencies happy. During the pool closure prior to the Christmas break, Building Maintenance and some Parks and Rec staff got in and were able to do place and fix some fixtures and eye bolts in the pool, so it worked out really well. Gymnastics, swim lessons, youth volleyball, youth soccer are all going to be starting shortly, and we're starting to offer full birthday party packages at Parks and Rec and getting a lot of community support and scheduling of that. The Roller Derby Girls are off and running. They were, I think, helped out with the Drive-In Movie and are starting to get themselves up and running and has been really good so far. Donnie was, was very impressed. He would have been here tonight. He's still... Library hours have changed to better match the usage of the facility. The old hours were roughly 50 hours a week. The new hours are 48 hours a week. Kind of moved some schedules around a little bit to where we had, we were staying open at times and no one would show up, so we tried to move some times around a little bit. This should be the schedule that we open the new library with as well, so. And that's it, unless there's questions.
Any questions of the city managers? Come as reports? See none. Onto unfinished business. Item A is Borough. Gino Appeal, the LBC must prepare a new agency record for the Court of the May Borough Hearing. Portions of the May 30th and 31st Agency Record of the hearing are either duplicated or missing information. Assistant Attorney General Erlin Johansson will file notice with the Court regarding the need for an updated record and will request new appeal and brief... the need for an updated record and will request new appeal and briefing schedules. So, I don't know if that'll prolong things or assume it won't make them go any faster.
We assume it'll make it, take a little longer. Sarah and Jim Brennan caught it when they were reviewing the materials that the LBC had submitted to the court and realized that a large percentage of the testimony taken during the borough hearings was missing and the pages were numbered improperly. So, he caught it, the LBC reviewed it, realized they had made a mistake and have resubmitted, asked the court to accept the resubmitted documents, as far as it stands.
Was information lost or they just didn't?
They, copy machine problem, I would have.
So, they have a full record now?
The court has been submitted the revised full record.
Okay.
We're in the process of making sure the court will accept it.
Okay. Let's hope so at this point.
Yes.
Any other discussion on the Gino appeal? Okay, future transition items. This agenda item will be reserved for the next few months in an attempt to give advance notice of upcoming matters regarding transition from city to borough government. Currently, staff is reviewing city code to determine which of the existing ordinances can be carried forward for borough use. Tonight's agenda includes proposed borough ordinances based on the city's existing code and revised to meet borough charter requirements for the sale and transient room taxes and installation of officers and appointment process to vacancies. Next item is redistricting. The court has ordered the redistricting plan to be redrawn for the 2014 election. Currently, there is no need for the borough to retain legal counsel on the matter. However, legal counsel has advised that the borough should pay very close attention and take active participation if needed and where allowed in the revision process. Then late today, we got some correspondence from our attorney, Klinkner, Tom Klinkner, that said the redistricting board is appealing the court's decision. What that means, I don't know if the city needs to jump in and take any action or not. The redistricting board does admit in the last paragraph of it that southeast redistricting was done improperly. So, we'll have to see what happens.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I've read the underlying decision. I don't think we need to do anything, but I think it is good to have our attorney watch the process and keep them on retainer for that because we may need to participate in future taking of testimony.
I agree, and he's not only going to keep track, but then the Assemblyperson Strand and myself will as well because we were the original plaintiffs in the first lawsuit. So, if anybody gets any information about it, it'd be nice to pass it along because it's an important issue. The next item under old business is SEPA and D. Hittlin Associates O&amp;M report. There's no new information at this time. The Assembly is expected to conduct another work session on this matter in the near future if need be. And that moves us on to new business, first new business of the Petersburg borough. And here it starts. Ordinance number 2013-1, an ordinance providing for an area-wide sales tax in the amount of 6% throughout the Petersburg borough and providing for the administration, collection, and reporting of sales tax. This is the first reading. Do we have a motion to adopt the first reading?
So moved.
Seconded. No discussion on it for the first reading. The clerk will call the roll.
John Haberle.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
And just for people listening on the radio or in the audience, the second reading of this ordinance, which will be on the next meeting on the 21st of January, will be the public hearing as well at that meeting. So, public has any input?
22nd of January.
The 22nd? Okay.
The 21st is a holiday.
Thank you for the correction. So, that will be the date of the public hearing. And the ordinance will become effective April 1st of 2013 when they get through all three readings if they make it. Okay, the second ordinance of the evening, ordinance 2013-2, an ordinance for providing for an area-wide transient room tax in the amount of 4% throughout the Petersburg borough and providing for the administration, collection, and reporting of the transient room tax. This is the first reading. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move we adopt.
Their second?
Ordinance 2013 number two.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on ordinance 2013-2? Seeing none. Will the clerk call the roll?
John Howe.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes. And just a little clarification. The ordinance adheres to the borough charter and transition plan requirements that the former city of Petersburg transient room tax provisions become area-wide within 90 days of the borough incorporation. And that holds true as well for ordinance 2013-1 on the area-wide sales tax. Ordinance 2013-3, an ordinance providing for the installation of elected officers and appointments to vacancies in elected offices of the Petersburg borough. Ordinance number three carries forward most of the prior city of Petersburg's regulations on installation of officers and appointments to vacancies. The ordinance conforms to the Petersburg Borough Charter requirements and is needed to assure that appointments to vacancies are made within 45 days. The ordinance does not apply to any of the advisory boards or prior city public safety, harbors, and ports, library, utility, parks, and recreation boards. Per Borough Charter 1908.C, the Assembly has up to one year to determine by ordinance if these boards will continue on a borough basis. Entertained a motion to adopt ordinance 2013-3 in its first reading.
I move we adopt ordinance 2013-3 in first reading.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 2013-3 in its first reading. Any discussion? Seeing none. Will the clerk call the roll?
Nancy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
John Haberle.
Yes.
John Howe?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes. Okay, item D under new business this evening. Resolution Designating Official Public Notice Posting Places for the Borough. This agenda item has been postponed until contact can be made with necessary parties to make posting arrangements at Papke's Landing, the city of Kupernoff, and the Harbor Department. Until resolved, standard public service announcements will continue to be aired over the radio stations, posted at the municipal office building, and posted at the United States Post Office when appropriate.
Mr. Mayor?
Kathy?
I just wanted council to be aware. I'm trying to get a hold of the proprietor of the trees who's out of town until the mid, until 14th of this month to see if we could use his business as our required posting for Papke's Landing. If they do not want to participate or they don't want to be the posting place, we may have to look at erecting some type of posting thing down by the dock maybe or something at Papke's so we can use it for posting. Because the charter for the borough is a little bit specific on some posting areas that they wanted, you know, they wanted to make sure it got posted. So, to abide by that, we might have to do some little bit of extra stuff.
Okay. So, you're trying to contact Larry Dunham?
Yeah, and he's out of town.
Any more discussion on item D, on posting places? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. Establish regular meeting schedule. Borough Charter Selection 2.07 says the Assembly must meet regularly and at such times and places as prescribed by ordinance. Because the borough has populated areas outside of the prior city limits, staff is recommending that prior to designating the meeting criteria by ordinance, consideration be given to the conduct of, to conduct a public hearing or hearings on the subject. Until a new meeting criterion is established for ordinance purposes, the Assembly is asked to establish a temporary meeting schedule so that business can be continued without delay or interruptions. So, we have a motion to establish some kind of a temporary meeting schedule.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move that we maintain our meetings on the first Monday and the third Monday as we have in the past. The only change I'd like to make, and this is for two reasons, to be more friendly to any borough people, any out-of-town people, across-the-way people that may be interested coming, I would like to move, have at least one of those meetings at noon. And this would also allow people from across the way or out the road to come in and just offer public input while it's still light, you know, especially during the winter times. I wouldn't mind having both at noon, but I think we should have at least one in, one of our meetings at noon. So, I'd like to make a motion that, the motion is that we maintain our first and third Monday meetings and at least, well, I'll just put it to a specific, the first meeting of each month be at noon.
Sarah, second?
I'm second.
I've seen no discussion from any of the other Assembly members. I'll throw my thought in there. I prefer evening meetings and my reason, and I know it's not user-friendly so much for people that have to travel across the water. My reason is because of the people at work can attend the meetings, you know, when they're not during their work day. I guess they could take their lunch break to come and attend the meetings, but if, I guess if it's the wish of the Assembly, well, that's how it will be until we come up with a ordinance to draft a permanent.
And one thing, Mr. Mayor, that could be considered on that is to, is during the winter months, it would might, you know, very appropriate to have one at noon so the folks can travel here. And, you know, in the summer, it's not as important. So, that can be taken into consideration.
With the daylight.
Mr. Mayor, for me?
Yes.
Assemblymember Flint had a great idea. Sue, I didn't know if you wanted to talk about?
About the reception?
Yeah, I mean, the start of maybe getting some input from these folks.
Yeah, I was thinking that it would be nice if we had a welcome reception, kind of invite all the constituents, the new ones and the older ones, to the council chambers like next Tuesday afternoon. It would be an opportunity to talk about all these things, what people want. We heard some good ideas last week on the KFSK interviews from people on both sides of the issue. We have a lot of decisions and we need more input than just the six of us, I think, as far as APAC filings, special elections, meeting dates and times, and taxes, and advisory boards. Do we need them? Do we want to elect them? Do we want to appoint them? Do we want five members, seven members? And I just thought it would be a good time to kind of have a little open house here, have a little coffee or something, and invite the community to come and meet department heads and Assembly folks and manager and have a lot of specific questions and take any comments and be a good way to get information from people.
Has there been a, I know we talked about this earlier, time chosen. I know you were talking about 3 o'clock and if it's, we're worried about daylight and people coming by water, we might want to have it more earlier in the day.
Well, I said 1 to 3. 1 to 3. I figured Tuesday is the day everybody comes to town to go grocery shopping and so Tuesday at 1 to 3 would be good daylight.
Oh, about noon to 3. That way, if people are on the lunch hour, they could.
There you go. That's fine too, yeah. So, I just thought that might be kind of a good idea to welcome our new constituents and also be able to give out information on the boards openings that are available and the Assembly positions that are available and what you have to do to apply for those.
This will be Tuesday, the 15th?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So.
So, we have a date for that. Back to the discussion on the motion to establish our temporary meeting dates, which is, the motion reads, if I'm not mistaken, it'll be the first and third Mondays and the first Monday of every month will be at noon. Any more discussion on that?
My thought was, let's leave it how it is unless we get some participation from someone who needs earlier hours.
That's why I asked.
Right.
This might change your.
And so, if that's your feeling, we'd need an amendment to the motion.
I think, I'd like to make a, you can see the participation now with it at 7 o'clock and it's in, well, it's not impossible for someone who lives elsewhere to come in. They'd have to come a day ahead and stay overnight and I think that we should make a good faith effort to make it as easy as possible for people who live elsewhere to come without having to stay overnight.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I like John's suggest, John H.'s suggestion that we, this is a temporary trial. If nobody shows up to the noon meetings, then we've got an answer.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
That's why I sort of made the motion because I want to try to be more inviting to people who are across the way and out the road, not only to offer their, come in and participate, but if we're looking at a couple extra members, which we are, and we're always talking about trying to recruit people from the new borough, that we, to be more friendly to that option, we need to get them at a time where it's more convenient or if nothing else, just safer to travel.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with a lot of the points made to having it at noon, but my main objection to a midday meeting is the people that work for a living are going to, if they want to participate in the meeting, it's going to cost them money. So, I guess that's just me included. But, well, that's all I have to say about it.
Well, in theory, it's temporary. We can try to see what happens.
Correct.
My two cents.
So, maybe after we have public meetings and we could come up with a consensus of that will best fit everybody in the borough. So, any more discussion? Clerk call the roll. This is to establish a temporary meeting schedule for the new borough.
John Howe.
Yes.
John Haberle.
Yes.
Mark?
No.
Nancy?
Yes.
And Sue?
Yes.
Okay, it passes 4 to 1. Authorization for purchase and use of the Petersburg Borough Seal. An official seal for the, to conduct, for the conduction, I guess you'd call it, or to conduct borough business is necessary. The Borough Seal within the meeting packet is a draft drawing of the new city, of the new seal carrying the Petersburg brand logo. The company that is hired to provide the seal press will be responsible for the final seal layout. On page 37, I believe, if you haven't looked at it, it's a little more, you know, I like the design better than the other one. 37 is the new one, 38 would be the old one. So, this is what we're looking at if you just don't have it. And it's, right on your hat. Nice advertising you. So, I guess we need a motion to approve that. If, I don't see a dollar value with it. Is there one associated yet?
No, I don't have any idea what a.
Stamp is on it.
It's going to happen.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the seal that's shown on page 37. Their second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the seal that was presented to us this evening in our packet. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
John Howe.
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
John Haberle?
Yes.
And Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, it passes. Next item, authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Dow HKM for responses to the RF, for responses to the RFP for design services for the pump station one force main upgrade project were received. The review committee deems Dow HKM as the preferred consultant for the project and recommended the borough enter into a professional services agreement not to exceed $44,491. Do we have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to authorize, move into professional services agreement with Dow HKM for the amount not to exceed $44,491. Any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk call the roll.
John Haberle?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, authorization to use the 2012, $198,000 SEPA rebate to offset diesel costs during the annual shutdown to. the annual shutdown to do work on the hydro facility. This refund has traditionally been used to offset the diesel costs during the annual shutdown as it benefits all users. Have a motion to approve that idea?
Sue, move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the expenditure of the $198,000 CIPA rebate to offset diesel costs during the annual shutdown. Any discussion? Seeing none.
I'd just like to observe that this has worked well in the past when we've used this rebate for, for this purpose.
Joe, do you have any thing to say?
I think it's very appropriate.
Clerk will call a roll.
Sue.
Yes.
John Haverly.
Yes.
John Hope.
Yes.
Nancy.
Yes.
And Mark.
Yes. Authorization for membership in Petersburg Chamber of Commerce for 2013. The annual dues for the borough to be a member of the Petersburg Chamber of Commerce is $1,500. Have a motion to adopt so we can have discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize us to pay $1,500 for our Chamber of Commerce membership.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to spend $1,500 for the borough, become a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm having a problem with the price tag, especially compared to what any other business pays to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce.
Any other comments?
All right, I've observed too that the other non, or the other, the rate for an organization non-business, which I think we are, right, is 137.50. And there are apparently no other municipalities that care to join, so perhaps if they lowered the municipality rate, they'd get another municipality or two as a member.
Sue.
I was curious if we've been paying this for a while, have we?
I can only speak about last year.
And we did.
And we did.
The finance director is out. Kathy, do you have any history on this item?
You know, we didn't always pay this high dues. I don't really know when it went higher. I don't have something to do with the property taxes that the chamber pays for their lease on their building, so Jody is more familiar with it than I am.
Just a thought, is there any reason we couldn't postpone this till the next meeting when the finance director is here to give us a better explanation or does it that time sensitive?
Well, maybe somebody from the chamber should show up and give us an explanation.
Right. We've missed our discount date already, so I don't think there's a problem.
Yeah. We could, we could make a request.
When is the discount date? I thought we had a month.
Either that or if it's the wish of the council, we can, or the Assembly.
No, we have it, it's January 31st, so we could still make it.
Oh, there you are.
Ten percent.
So, postpone it until Jody and we can ask the chamber to.
So, we would need a motion to postpone to a time certain, which would be the meeting on the.
There's a motion on the floor. I'm willing to withdraw my second.
I'm willing to withdraw my first.
I move that we postpone this till the next council meeting and invite the chamber to show up and explain our dues.
I think that would be a cleaner way to do it. So, it's been moved and seconded to postpone to the meeting on the 22nd of January, so. Call those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's what we'll do. Okay, back to the list. Communications. We had a letter from the governor's office, it was from Karen Rayfeldt, the Director of Management and Budget, and they received our capital projects priority list. She indicated that the governor's budget was released on December 14th and could not contain all the projects requested, which is pretty standard. She urged the Assembly to contact legislators directly to discuss funding for capital projects. So that is the reason to go to Gino in February. Any discussion on the letter?
Just one thing, while Petersburg did not get any of our city or municipal projects funded in the governor's budget, the school district may very well have scored. The governor, it sounds like, has funded the top 12 projects and we probably were number three. So, there is a significant amount of money for the community if in fact the legislature approves that and everything stays as it is, so.
So that would be another thing to talk about with our.
Just to make sure that.
Delegates up there.
They approve and keep it there.
Mr. Mayor, what's got, Joe?
I was thinking on, just in case he changes his mind, which often occurs on capital projects, that if we could take a packet on the new jail showing pictures of how bad our present one is and listing the life, health, safety issues with it and give those packets to every legislator we could run into, I fear it'd never hurt, you know, just to have that information out there. And if we have a prepared packet, we can just give them an envelope and.
I think we have submitted our capital projects list to our representatives there as well as Senator Stedman and Peggy Wilson, but it wouldn't hurt to maybe put a small packet together to present.
In that sec, we will actually have probably the top, I'll have the whole project book with me and we'll have copies of the, probably the top five projects individual with extra copies just to kind of, you guys can carry them and, you know, kind of rattle the saber a little bit, but we will, we will bring extra copies of what we've already submitted that go in and that includes pictures as well as cost estimates. Hopefully by then we'll have some actual drawings of what we're proposing as well.
Sounds good. Just to touch on this a little bit more with the, in the conversation I had with our lobbyist Ray Mattiashowski, he said, you know, if we wanted to, he could try to get us into the governor's office as well, so that might be a good step. Then bring him and then discuss the police station. From talking with the city manager, there's other communities, municipalities around the state that are also trying to build police stations, public safety buildings, so maybe we could, hopefully something will come.
Here are the police station, the last time was the year of the harbor.
Yeah, hopefully.
However, we did take the book last year and we gave them all those photos of that building ripping itself apart down there, so they.
We, and we.
They have seen it before, but it, we'll have to do it again.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so it sounds like we're moving in the right direction on that.
I would like to add that there's some new bulges.
I would imagine so.
Is that after the holiday?
Let's move, let's move along here, folks. The council discussion items, recognitions. This agenda item is reserved to acknowledge individuals, groups, departments, agencies or anyone for their contributions toward the betterment of the Petersburg community. Is there any recognitions this evening?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to just add my voice to the superintendent's. That emergency Friday night went off like clockwork, other than the little bottleneck up at the ballpark, which I'm sure Sandy will change that message to give him alternative sites to get to, but it was so nice to see everything working, the phones were all ringing and the sirens going by and the neighbors all driving to town and the radio, Julie running up to the radio and so I thought it went very well and thankfully, no tsunami.
I have to agree.
And going running to the radio station.
It was easy to keep informed, but, you know, you just, you got the phone call, you knew what had happened, if you didn't realize it when it took place and you turned the radio on and KFSK was on top of it and the police were out telling you to head for high ground, so I think we're, it'll be kept safe. Borough land selection. Borough incorporation will allow Petersburg to select approximately 1,700 acres of state land to become borough property. The Assembly may want to discuss how the selection of this land will be determined. And I don't know if there's been any updates, but I believe, as you said, Steve, the last maps available were from 2000.
Yes.
And Sue Christiansen is trying to get the most current maps and I've looked at the old ones and there's land scattered up from Cape Van Chau down to the south end of Mitkoff Island and Kupernoff Island and in my mind, there's some that would be very beneficial for the plans, maybe we should form a committee of some kind from.
Could some of these maps, even if they're out of date, be available for this meeting next Tuesday?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So some of the folks that live outside, who live in these areas could add their two cents to it and certainly I would like to see staff also be involved in it.
Oh, yeah.
Plus, some folks have got a lot of knowledge of the local land, so I think a committee would be a good idea.
Yeah, and, you know, there's a lot of people that have good foresight and what, you know, would be, you know, beneficial in the future.
I've had people express interest in serving on such a committee. Sam Mundy, for example.
Yeah, I've had interesting people, so, yeah. All right, so I guess we'll, could be another, could be an item on our next agenda, maybe, Kathy, where we can ask to form a committee for that and maybe by then we can get the most up-to-date maps and at the meeting, the luncheon or whatever you want to call it, coffee and cake thing on Tuesday, we can sell some maps to spread around.
Well, it's also ask the public if anybody's interested to put in a short letter of intent like they would to be on the planning commission.
I think that's what we need.
Yeah.
And I don't know how many people would be good to be on an ad hoc committee for something like that, but we'll see who expresses interest. So would it be the wish of the Assembly to advertise for that right now?
I think that'd be appropriate, yes.
Kathy, can you put some kind of a letter together and get it out on the radio and in the paper?
How long do we have to select the land?
I think some of the boroughs that were formed years ago are still selecting.
Correct.
Some of it, I think they held over state land that was going to be turned over to the university until our borough was formed or until the election was over, so I don't know if there's a deadline after, since it's certified now.
I think there is, but I don't know what it is.
So, okay, so maybe that information should be brought over to.
Well, if this helps you at all, the Kenai Peninsula Borough still has land they haven't chosen.
Do you know when their incorporation was?
Long before Wrangell's, I believe.
Maybe it was health land or maybe just, you know, maybe it was university lands that have the deadline on it.
It is.
I don't know how much university lands we got up there.
Yeah, anyway, it appears from, as we've had it described to us, is that it's a very long process. The state doesn't necessarily have clear title to the lands that has been designated as state land. Some of it is federal land given to the state by the federal government and it's never been surveyed necessarily or title transferred. So, the process starts with us choosing it and then it having to go all the way back to make sure the state has clear title and in some cases having to go back to the federal government to get clear title in dealing with whatever federal agency may have at one time had it. So, it is a very, very long process. If there is a formal expiration date, it's way out there, but it doesn't hurt to get started on those properties that people here have a definite interest in.
And I think we should make ourselves aware of what land is going to be, come unavailable if there is a, you know, a sunset on it or whatever you'd call it, so we can act quickly on that. Any other discussion?
Well, there may be federal land that was promised to the state, that statehood that hasn't transferred over that we might be able to possibly consider.
May even be that. Yeah.
It's the same.
So it's good to have a, some maps.
It was vacant, unreserved, unclassified land that the federal government gave the state and maybe when this became a state.
Right, and they haven't done that yet or.
That could be what they're referring to.
Any more discussion on the borough land selection? Okay, borough attorney. Borough Charter Section 2.12 provides for the Assembly to appoint a borough attorney to advise the Assembly manager or clerk concerning legal issues affecting the borough. Does the Assembly want to retain Dillon and Finley as legal counsel for the Petersburg Borough or conduct an RFP process for a borough attorney? Any ideas?
I, I'm of a philosophy that an RFP process is a good idea. I've dealt with Dillon and Finley on three different matters and, you know, found them to be competent, but I don't think there's any harm in seeing which firm specializes in municipal work and what their rates are and what they have to offer.
Sounds good. Any other input? Okay, I would suggest that we do an RFP process for a borough attorney. In the meantime, would we retain Dillon and Finley as our.
That's what I was going to suggest, yeah.
Borough attorney?
Yeah.
Until we find a replacement, but the odds are it might even be them. Now's the time to advertise, I guess, it's during the transition. Any other council discussion items?
Mr. Mayor, I have to be out of town on the 22nd due to a family issue. I intend to call in and participate by phone. I'm pleased to note that the charter, unlike the old code, doesn't prohibit that.
I don't think it prohibited it before.
Yeah, it did.
So we just, we were in violation?
Shh. Since the main violator is now the mayor.
I'm not, I understood you could participate, you couldn't vote by phone, but.
No, you could be counted for quorum.
Yes, you can't, it is a point of the quorum.
Okay, well, we'll have four, we'll have a quorum, so.
Yeah, as long as you have four.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First borough meeting is officially adjourned.